All right, I'll call this regular town board meeting for April to order. We could rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Host?
Here.
White?
Here.
Michaela?
Here.
Zandito?
Here.
Someone move to approve the minutes of the March 15 regular town board meeting.
So moved.
Seven.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zandito?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
My fingers didn't work right. White?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Sharon, resolution number 68.
You got speakers?
Oh, speakers, I'm sorry. Jerry, what you say, speaker?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I'm sorry. I lost track.
No.
Welcome.
Hello to everybody.
Hello.
Hello, I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm sure we all agree, there's no doubt, we agree that no town of Batavia citizen coming in to participate like I'm doing tonight to voice their opinion should be publicly mocked or ridiculed for their views. No one should have to worry about that, and I'm sure we all agree on that. That's just fact. At the March 21st, 2023 Board, Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting, I was mocked and ridiculed by the planning board. They knew their meeting would be posted publicly online. This will encourage people to participate in the Town of Batavia. I mean, I don't know if you understand, people understand the term power drunk, you know, people in power positions, they, sometimes they're just an ordinary person, and then it amplifies the term power drunk, or drunk with power. I mean, the thing was televised, I've got friends watching that, numerous phone calls. It stems probably from the last time I was here, I participated in the public portion of your meeting, like I am tonight, and as you'll remember, I expressed that I could be wrong. I talked about, I voiced concerns about the safety of the corner of Lewiston and Park Roads by adding the construction of the two mini plazas, buildings, to an actively for sale 116,000 square foot Kmart building. I felt that combined with the 5 and 63 merge or mess in front of Tops, that the corridor of Lewiston and Lewiston Road would become a disaster. I mean, this is what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the corner of Park Road and Lewiston, and when these additional mini plazas are put into the existing parking lot, and for whatever becomes of the Kmart building, that there's going to be egress and exit problems, getting in and getting out. There's only the Lewiston Road corridor, and the other exit entrance lines up with the valet parking at Batavia Downs. And so people are trying to get in and out of there, and it was my opinion, you remember me saying, I said, I could be wrong, but I expressed my opinion. So on the March 21st agenda of the planning board, unbeknownst to me, my name was mentioned, agenda number four, site plan review for a temporary fireworks sale in 83 Lewiston Road, requested by Keystone Novelties, Jerry Arena. Well, I have property, and the applicant was Keystone Novelties, I'm not going to sell fireworks, it's not mine, and I obviously wasn't required to be there, so I immediately called the Keystone representative, the applicant, Chris Engler, and I asked him, I said, did you know about the meeting? He said he didn't know, he wasn't contacted about the meeting, or he would have liked to have been there. And this, this number four on his agenda, almost got tabled, and it kind of sticks a craw in me when, when there was hardly any conversation, when I'm saying about Henderson, show me on your site plan where your sidewalks and where all this is, you know, you got marked, you got sidewalks and bypass, and here's a little 20 by 40 foot tent that's going to be tabled because one of the guys says, well, you know, they thought I should have been there, and it was a little disrespectful. Well, I would never disrespect a town. I'm 24/7 businessman, always have been, and if I thought I was supposed to be at that meeting, I would have been there. And there was a lot of confusion, and it went on for quite some time, they agreed not to table it. They compared it to a public hearing where one gentleman wasn't here for his public hearing, which you gotta be here for a public hearing, because you gotta answer questions. Well, this is just a 20 by 40 foot tent for fireworks that's been approved in the town before, and there was a lot of talk about, well, we'll do it, but we'll do it, that it's not longer than three months. You know, what is temporary? Temporary, for temporary fireworks sales, what is temporary? They discussed that, and it's, well, it can't last longer than three months. Well, if anybody did their homework, New York State will not allow fireworks to be sold only between June 23rd and July 5th. In that application by Chris of Keystone, he had asked for on property from 6/21 to July 7, 17 days, not even closer to 30 days. So, I just, I'm almost done, I don't want to take a lot of your time here, but it was upsetting to me, and amidst some of the laughter, you know, I'm 70 years old, I don't hear so good, and then my wife get the closed caption for me, because there was so much laughter, and I don't think laughing about me being concerned about the public safety and quality of life on Lewiston Road, and I don't think that's a laughing matter, but I don't know who the guy is that represents me with a hat sitting on the, on the, on the board. Jonathan Long, he started off, he says, I imagine it'll be pretty low traffic after all the traffic talk. And then poem, "Our Chiefs," yeah, gotta be really low traffic then. And all the laughter and the giggling, okay. And the worst part is the chairman, chairwoman, should we make him do, should we make him do a traffic study? And, oh, that brought some laughter. And that, part of what I was talking about when I was objecting to the Henderson project is how it affects my property. I'm not going to apologize for land I own. As a small business owner and supervisor, you own a small business, that's a payout, my land, I don't have a pension. And, of course, I'm concerned if there's too much traffic on the road, and people are going, but I can't be bound now all of a sudden, well, I imagine it'll be pretty low traffic after all the trac-- why do I have to have low traffic? Because I'm concerned about the corner of 63 and Park Road. I won't apologize for having my land for sale, but, okay, I just wanted to, and Mr. Supervisor, I thank you, and that's the wonderful thing about living in Batavia, I say, I love Batavia, a lot of people, Jerry, what are you doing in Batavia? I love Batavia, they sound out to a lot of people. Running to the head honcho here in front of the barbershop, and he gave me a public apology, he apologized to me, he didn't like the way the planning board handled themselves, and I thank him for that.
You're most welcome.
And that's all I got to say, and hopefully we'll see you again soon on a little better, better things to talk about.
Jerry, you're always welcome here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, thank you. Are there any other speakers this evening? Sharon, you're awake.
Pardon, what?
You're up.
I'm up. Okay.
Are you awake?
Oh, my gosh. Did I get them for you? I'm closer. That's from Sharon, that's from Sharon, how dare you.
Is it because she's old you think she's taking that? Is that what it is?
I am not going down that old age route. We already had that conversation tonight, I'm not, I'm not a partner in that anymore.
Supervisor?
Okay, resolution number 68, Memorial Day wreaths for cemeteries. Whereas the Town of Batavia has provided three wreaths for Memorial Day in honor of our veterans, and whereas the town would like to continue to provide wreaths, and whereas the wreaths will be placed at Dawes Corner Cemetery and Grandview Cemetery by the Batavia Memorial Day Committee, Disabled American Veterans, VFW, American Legion, Marine Corps League, and Vietnam Veterans of America. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes three wreaths to be purchased from Floral Fantasies at a cost of $65 each, and be it further resolved, the expenditure will be appropriated from line item A 6510.400 Veterans Services. So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution number 69, Memorial Day Flag for Cemeteries. Whereas the Glen Lewis Post number 332, American Legion, place flags at the grave sites of our veterans on Memorial Day in the town cemeteries, and whereas this organization has requested the Town of Batavia to provide the flags that it has done in the past, and whereas the 2023 budget reflects appropriations for this purchase, and whereas the flags will be placed at Dawes Corner Cemetery and Grandview Cemetery by the Daughters of the American Revolutionary War and/or the Batavia Memorial Day Committee, Disabled American Veterans, the VFW, American Legion, the Marine Corps League, and Vietnam Veterans of America, now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the purchase of six groves of eight by 12 polycotton American stick flags from AmericanLegionFlags.com at a cost of $109 per grove plus shipping cost, and be it further resolved, the expenditure will be appropriated from line item A 6510.400 Veterans Services, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Host?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Patty, I know you're awake, you just said yes. Number 70, please.
Support utility terrain vehicles to be registered in New York State. Whereas all train vehicles, ATVs, can lawfully be registered in the state of New York, and whereas snowmobiles can also be registered in the state of New York, and whereas it is recognized that both all train vehicles and snowmobiles create a great deal of revenue for Genesee County and New York, and whereas New York does not currently allow for the registration of utility terrain vehicles, UTVs, or side-by-sides, and whereas local governments would be, would benefit from additional source of revenue, and whereas allowing for the registration of UTVs would give counties another avenue to raise revenue, and whereas this legislature acknowledges the benefits of such registrations to our county and state as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Batavia supports the efforts to allow utility terrain vehicles to be registered in the state of New York, and urges New York State Legislature to take action on the said issue, and be it further resolved, the town clerk is hereby directed to send a copy of said resolution to the town's local and state representatives, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. I just want to make a note, this isn't all about revenue, this also allows the users of those things to have the same freedom to utilize, access, and rent, lease, or use public areas that registered snowmobiles and ATV can. They have been excluded from this, and I know that there is an ever-increasing number of aging people who prefer to sit side-by-side on their buggy but are prevented from doing that, so there's another benefit of this, it's not strictly revenue-generated, but it is supported by most of the municipalities and the county, and I do so support that, so. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. CAD number 71.
Training workshop resolved, Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the following personnel to attend training workshops. Donald Partridge, Hancockus, Strata, Land Use Training was February 23rd, there was no cost for this webinar. Michael Blinsey, Solar Development and Implications for Ag, there was no cost for this webinar. Sharon White, New York State Assembly and Senate, One House Budgets Webinar, March was March 23rd, there was no cost for this webinar. Hi, Live Rock, Keeping Up to Date Employee Handbooks was March 28th, there was no cost for this webinar. Hi, Live Rock Municipal Roundtable was March 24th, there was no cost for this training. Michael Blinsey, Lake Erie Watership Protection Alliance, three 20-minute online videos, no cost for this webinar, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zandito?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes. Sharon, resolution number 72.
Resolution to amend designation of official depository. Resolved at the Batavia Town Board, hereby amends resolution number eight of 2023 entitled Designation of Official Depository to Designate Courier Capital as an Additional Depository for the Town of Batavia for Investment Purposes. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. The business doesn't change just the name. Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution number 73, Resolution to Declare April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Fair Housing Act was passed in April 1968 and prohibits discrimination in housing due to race, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, disability status, et cetera, and whereas the Town of Batavia understands the importance of acting to further fair housing in the community, now therefore be it resolved, that the Town Board of the Town of Batavia hereby proclaims April as the Fair Housing Month in the Town of Batavia, and asks the citizens of the town to join in reaffirming the obligation and commitment to fair housing opportunities for all, and be it further resolved, the Town Board has designated Patty Michaela to act as the Fair Housing Officer, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Thanks for doing that, Patty.
Absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Host?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Patty, resolution 74.
Resolution acknowledging that the required audit of the court records and dockets was conducted, whereas section 2019A of the Uniform Justice Court Act requires the town justices annually provide their court records and dockets to their respective town auditing board, and that such records be audited, and that fact be entered into the minute of the board's proceedings, and whereas an audit was conducted of the town justices' records and dockets by Lumston and McCormick LLP, now therefore be it resolved, Batavia Town Board hereby acknowledges that the required audit of the court records and dockets was conducted, and hereby directs the supervisor to forward a copy of the auditor's report along with a copy of this resolution to join Kazaza Internal Control Liaison, New York State Office of Court Administration, 2500 Pond View Suite LL01, Castleton on Hudson, New York 12033, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Michaela?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Yes. CAD resolution 75.
Conflict waiver, Hodgins Russ LLP. Whereas the Town of Batavia engages in legal services with Hodgins Russ LLP, and whereas Rachel Parks, Associate of Hodgins Russ LLP, has requested a conflict waiver to potentially represent New Leaf Energy in relation to the solar development requests attached, and whereas the town attorney has reviewed the requests and has no objections to the requests, now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute the conflict waiver to Hodgins Russ LLP to potentially represent New Leaf Energy, copy of which is annexed to, annexed here to and made part of the minutes, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Sharon, resolution number 76.
Resolution to Approve a Seventh Amended Assessment Services Agreement with the Town of Bergen. Whereas the Town of Batavia and the Town of Bergen entered into a contract entitled Towns of Batavia and Bergen Assessment Services Agreement dated July 28, 2015, whereas both towns desire to continue this relationship, allowing Batavia to provide assessment services to Bergen, and whereas the Batavia has determined that it has the ability to provide the services by using the Batavia Town Assessor, who is and will continue to be fully qualified as required by law to provide assessment services with any support staffing as necessary. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Batavia, New York, that a proposed eighth amended Towns of Batavia and Bergen Assessment Services Agreement, a copy of which is annexed hereto and made part of the Town Board Minutes, is hereby approved, and the town supervisor is authorized and directed to sign this agreement on behalf of the Town of Batavia, and be it further resolved, that the effective date of this agreement shall be July 1, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution 77, 99 Med Tech Drive Solar Energy System Decommissioning Agreement, Batavia Solar LLC. Whereas Batavia Solar LLC submitted an application to the Town of Batavia for site plan approval for solar farm installation to be erected on parcel located at 99 Med Tech Drive, and whereas the Town of Batavia Planning Board approved the application on July 20, 2021, subject to the developer obtaining decommissioning bonds for such improvements in form suitable to the town attorney, and whereas the town attorney in consultation with the town engineer has presented an agreement entitled Batavia Solar Decommissioning Agreement with Batavia Solar LLC herein after the decommissioning agreement, to be in the town on said parcel for signature by the town and the operator of such installation, and whereas the town desires to approve the decommissioning agreement as presented, now therefore be it resolved, that the supervisor is authorized to sign the decommissioning agreement for the solar project located at 99 Med Tech Drive, Batavia, by and between the Town of Batavia and Batavia Solar LLC, a copy of which is annexed hereto and made a part of the Town Board Minutes, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Host?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Patty, resolution 78.
Resolution to Authorize Purchase of Computers and Monitors Engineering Department. Resolved, Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the purchase of computers from Dell Technologies, New York State Contract C 500 at a cost of $3,968.81, and monitors, New York State Contract C 86542 at a cost of $825.54 for the engineering department offices on Federal Drive, and be it further resolved, the expenditures will be appropriated from the following line item A 1410.010, I'm sorry, 1410.201, $4,794.35, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. CAD resolution 79.
Purchase and Installation of Additional Security Access Great Lakes Building Systems as Written, So Moved.
Discussion.
Who seconded? We need that for you.
Now who's sleeping?
I was kind of droozing off there. It's been a long day. I didn't get a nap today. Roll call, please.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes. Sharon, resolution 80.
Purchase and Installation of Fire Alarm Control System, Great Lakes Building Systems. Whereas the town requested a quote to add a fire alarm control system to the additional town offices on Federal Drive, and whereas Great Lakes Building Systems submitted a quote, New York State Contract PT 68804, at a cost of $8,633.52. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the purchase and installation of a fire alarm control system from Great Lakes Building Systems, New York State Contract number PT 68804, at a cost of $8,633.52, a copy of said proposal, which is annexed hereto and made a part of the Town Board Minutes, and be it further resolved, the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents that may be necessary for this purchase, and be it further resolved, the expenditure will be expended from line item A 1620.200, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution 81, Purchase IT Equipment for Federal Drive Hurricane Technologies Incorporated. Whereas IT equipment is needed for the additional offices on Federal Drive, and whereas Hurricane Technologies Incorporated provided a quote for 48-port UN-5 POE-plus switch, a Sonic Wall TZ470, Access Pont Wi-Fi 6 Pro, rack mount battery backup, 1,500 volt amps, at a cost of $4,169 quote attached. Now therefore be it resolved, Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the purchase of the aforementioned equipment for the price of $4,169, and be it further resolved, the expenditure will be appropriated from line item A 1680.200, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Host?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Patty, resolution 82.
Purchase of Security Cameras and Cableing, Ultimate Cableing Services for Fennel Drive as Written, So Moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes. CAD resolution 83.
83? Hang on, I'm on the wrong one. Resolution to Authorize Purchase of Office Chairs for Town Offices Mid-City, Mid-City Office Furniture as Written, So Moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zandito?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Amended Resolution number 65 of 2023, United Way Day of Caring. Resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby amends resolution number 65 of 2023 entitled United Way Day of Caring, authorizing a team of 10 rather than five employees from the Town of Batavia to participate in the United Way Day of Caring, Thursday, May 11, 2023. Employee must have Department Head approval to participate, so moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Free of man, the Town of Batavia always gets the job done.
Yes, and 10 will be either side of it.
I appreciate all the participation and the support for this. Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution 85, Resolution Appointing Assistant Town Engineer. Whereas the 2023 town budget reflects appropriations to hire an assistant town engineer for the engineering department, and whereas the town desires to hire a permanent full-time assistant engineer 40 hours a week, and whereas Steven Tanner satisfies the requirements and qualifications, now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the hiring and appointment of Steven Tanner, provisional position of full-time assistant town engineer for the engineering department at a rate of $62.50 per hour, with a start date of April 24, 2023 or after, and be it further resolved, as per the Town of Batavia policy, Mr. Tanner is subject to a physical background and driver's license check and drug and alcohol testing, and be it further resolved, the expenditure will be appropriated from line item A 1440.107, and be it further resolved, there is a six-month probationary period for this position, at which time an evaluation of performance will be assessed for an increase in pay or dismissal of duties, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Host?
Yes.
Zandito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Number 86.
Reviewed Incident Command System, Organizational Chart Contact List, Emergency Preparedness Plan. Whereas the Town of Batavia has an emergency preparedness plan in place, whereas the Incident Command System, Organizational Chart Contact List of personnel names and phone numbers has been--
has been reviewed and updated on the contact list. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby reviewed the organizational chart contact list, and it has been updated, a copy of which is annexed hereto and made a part of the minutes. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution number eighty-seven.
Bond resolution due to April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three of the Town Board of the town of Batavia, Genesee County, New York, the town authorizing the acquisition of maintenance vehicles and associated equipment at an estimated maximum cost of six hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars and authorizing the issuance of serial bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed six hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars pursuant to the local finance law to finance such purpose, such amount to be offset by any federal, state, county, and/or local funds received, and delegating the power to issue bond application notes in anticipation of the sale of such bonds to the town supervisor as written, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Yes. Sharon, resolution number eighty-eight.
Country Applied Technologies Corporation doing business as CAT Co., approval of change order number five and number six, Park Road Improvement Project. As written, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution number eighty-nine. Acceptance of Solar Energy System Decommissioning Bond, ninety-nine Med Tech Drive, Batavia Solar LLC. Whereas the town of Batavia Town Board approved entering into an agreement entitled Batavia Solar Decommissioning Agreement with Batavia Solar LLC herein after decommissioning agreement dated April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with Batavia Solar LLC for solar farm installations to be erected on the following parcel, ninety-nine Med Tech Drive. And whereas the decommissioning agreement stipulates, prior to the issuance of the certificate of compliance, the operator shall execute and file with the town clerk a bond reasonably acceptable to the town attorney and engineer in an amount sufficient for the removal of the solar energy system and subsequent restoration of the property, and shall be based upon a cost certification prepared by the operator's engineer of record. And whereas the attorney for the town in consultation with the town engineer has reviewed and approved of a decommissioning performance bond and the cost certification, now therefore be it resolved that the Batavia Town Board hereby accepts the decommissioning performance bond along with the cost certification prepared by the operator's engineer, which are annexed hereto and made a part of the minutes. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Post?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Resolution number ninety.
Resolution in objection to Governor Hopel's New York housing compact proposal. I'm gonna say as written, so moved. Quite lengthy.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who seconded?
Yeah.
I only about to make a comment that I feel strongly that we all need to work collaboratively to provide adequate housing for the growth and the sustainability of our communities. The part of this that bothers me the most is it appears to be a component of a budget process in Albany rather than a legislative action that representatives get to comment on. And the fact that it can supersede the local zoning and planning and comprehensive master plans, that communities have spent countless hours, years, and decades enacting, is kinda contradictory to what I wore an oath to constitutionally. I oppose the method more than I oppose the concern for making available adequate housing. I'm not opposed to adequate housing, but I am opposed to the methodology that we have to conform to a metric that's statewide versus what we have to work with here. The percentages forecast for our community exceed what our local building permits have been, and I don't know how we can encourage more people to spend more money on building more houses. And so therefore I'm opposed to the legislation as it's presented in the process in which it's presented. So, thank you for supporting this. Roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That concludes our resolutions this evening. So moved to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Might be the biggest abstract we had in some time.
It is.
Pretty big one.
It's painful signing some of those.
Well. So.
One for seventy-eight cents.
Yeah.
I haven't seen a voucher for seventy-eight cents.
Yes.
We've got one for over a million and one for seventy-eight cents.
Yep.
I have a whole stack of invoices there. It takes a month to put together and several days to go through a process, so thank you for the application of your talent to review those. Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Under department reports, the history department has been successfully moved from the storage trailer in the highway garage, which is where it's resided for the last month after being moved out of the jury room in the courthouse, to a new temporary domain in the engineer field office on Federal Drive. Pretty well set up, so I know the clerk and my confidential secretary and historian and a couple of other associates who went over there and made that transition yesterday. So, that department is well on its way. There is a meeting between a consultant and the owners of the facility on East Main Street where the history department will hopefully be permanently ensconced this Friday to start doing sketch plans for facility build out there in partnership with the owners of the Ag Society. Under water sewer departments, engineering remains engaged in conversations with the city of Batavia on resolution language to forward and expedite the process to start the Kings Plaza pump station. We're days away from having a bid prepared for the meter replacement contract. Our partners in operations around the county communities, meters have all been read, and I think we've got it narrowed down to under one percent of the meters not being read the first time electronically. So, a lot of progress being made in the expedition of getting the accounting side of it squared away in a much quicker fashion. Highway Department has been repairing lawn damage, cleaning ditches, building access roads for future operations, various drainage processes while maintaining equipment ready to respond to the next snowstorm. God bless us if we don't have one. But gearing up for summer operations, including culvert replacements, paving, milling and paving, and overlays with several other townships, engaged in both shared service for us and with us providing services of hand-powered equipment. What other department do we have? Assessment, Rhonda's still engaged trying to get the final roll together so that that could be published. I think June first is their anniversary day. They have to have that ready, so they're all working, trying to get all the data input on that. And coordinating some, with May first, I'm sorry, coordinating with the building department to make sure the information transfers accurately and is up to date. That's pretty much all I have to report. There is no GAN meeting this month. The next one will be Thursday in May, I believe. Teresa, do you have anything to report?
Well, I'm not surprised. Seems like every month they've got something.
I hope so.
I gotta keep giving you money.
Every month, it never changes.
The March town clerk report, we collected fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, remitted forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents to the supervisor.
Wow.
The local share. It's due to development in the town.
Yes.
March tax collection and the final collection month, we collected three hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-one cents, remitted six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents to the supervisor for the penalties and the fees. The remainder went to the county. They rebalanced to a T, and those have been turned over. So, Jen did a good job helping us, you know, and she's learning how to do that, and yeah, so we got it all wrapped up, balanced to the penny.
Nice.
And Genesee County Office for the aging, we received a thank you note for the contribution for the senior rep program for two thousand and twenty-three. Also, they sent a notice to be posted, May seventeenth, they're having an open house. It is, May is older American month, and the theme is aging, unbound. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
No commas.
No commas.
I have too much, I have too much at risk.
You got one, two, three, four great hands here.
She's got a clean, oh, I'm not far behind. She's got a clean line to them. There's no Dan in the middle.
Yeah. Yeah, Dan is often a buffer for me, and Dan Underhill's not here, the coward. And I'm unprotected. I'm keeping my mouth shut, my eyes down.
I got the gavel right here.
As far as committee reports, are there any committee reports? I will mention that the committee, the Parks Committee will be reactivated and called to task as soon as practically possible to address the East Pembroke site. We've got committee members anxious to begin work there. Taylor McCabe and Don Ralph, myself have been on a dialogue, so as soon as practically possible, we'll have a meeting, invite them and get back in the pipeline of getting things, whatever we need to get done done, so we can start attacking that, getting that back into a schedule to complete. Sharon, it's that time. Do you have any old business?
No, I do not.
Chad, any new business?
No, sir.